Recording in progress.
Good morning, and we will now call to order today's Board of Supervisors meeting, Tuesday, November 7th, for our 9:00 AM agenda. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Gallagher?
Here.
Supervisor Cottrell?
Here.
Supervisor Petrosa? Supervisor Gregory?
Here.
Chair Ramos?
Here. In honor of property taxes being due here very soon, I will invite our treasurer, tax collector, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as a reminder, payments can be made by mail, online, and if you want to come in person to 1195 Third Street, there's some reserved parking to facilitate your payments of property taxes. Next, we will, you know, one of the, one of the things that is incredibly important in each of our public meetings is all the behind the scenes that makes these meetings accessible, that makes them smooth, that makes them predictable to the extent that they can be, and that is our behind the scenes clerk. The clerk of the board, which is... Oh, I skipped ahead. I, um, yeah, so like I said, the clerk is in charge, and the clerk has just told me I skipped three and I'm moving on to four, so this one's cute. So we'll turn to number three, and that is our pet of the week. And this one is super cute. This is Hopper. So when you think about animals at the animal shelter, it's not just cats, it's not just dogs. I've adopted a chicken there before, we've had donkeys, we have all sorts of cavies, guinea pigs, and we have Hopper. And Hopper is one of many, many animals available at the shelter. And just as a reminder, if you are interested in adopting Hopper, the Board of Supervisors will be waiving the adoption fee. And now we're going to switch, and I'm going to hold Hopper, and Katie's going to share some more about this week at the animal shelter.
So Hopper is a two-year-old neutered male rabbit. He was found in American Canyon City Limits, and he came to us, he was actually injured and had an abscess on his cheek. We have a wonderful partnership with House Rabbit Society, and they were able to go ahead and determine that he had a tooth that was causing that abscess. They got it taken care of, he's completely healed up, and he is an absolute love. So this is Hopper. It is also National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week. With that, I just wanted to speak really quickly about the animal shelter. Most of the time, it is public perception that it is a sad place for animals to be at, which is actually not the case. We are a safe haven for animals to come that are running out large in the streets. We have an amazing group of volunteers and staff that have dedicated their time to making sure that the animals that are staying at the shelter have, have enrichment, they're having a positive outcome being at the shelter. Last year, we were able to achieve 95% live outcome for the animals in our care. And so this week, if you come by the shelter, if you want to check out Hopper, or you just want to come and visit the animals, if you can, just say thank you to the dedicated staff that is there taking care of them, doing the hard work of animal sheltering.
Excellent. Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Hopper, for coming on down. And remember, visit the shelter. You can also check out our website, and you can see pictures of all the adoptable animals that are on our website. And that link will be available on the countyofnapa.org. Thank you. And now, moving back to what I was originally talking about before the behind the scenes boss told me to stick to the agenda, and that is the importance of our clerk of the board, and what the clerk of the board does in every single jurisdiction, whether it's at the municipal and special districts level, or at the county function level. And I wanted to read a proclamation in honor of Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week, November 27th through December 1st, 2023. Whereas California counties provide many services that are essential to the lives of Californians, and whereas the position of the clerk of the Board of Supervisors plays an integral role in the function of California County government, and whereas the clerk of the board performs many legally mandated functions that protect and preserve the rights of citizens to an open and accessible government, and whereas the clerk duties of record-keeping is revered, their work among the earliest recorded on behalf of the public, and the clerks have long pledged to maintain their neutrality and impartiality of the proceedings of government, and whereas the California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Association, an affiliate of CSAC, is organized to promote the principles of good government, to represent the interests of the clerks of the board with legislative bodies and other professional organizations, to encourage the development of professional growth and education, and to support the objectives of all regional groups established within the association, and where it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the clerks of the board across the 58 counties of the state of California. Now therefore be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, on the 7th day of November, does hereby recognize November 27th through December 1st as Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week in Napa County. In doing so, we recognize the high level of service bestowed upon the people of Napa County and the people of the, of California by clerks of the board. And let me just add, when you look back at how we were able to make meetings accessible throughout 2022, 2021, with the challenges of a public, of a worldwide public health crisis, that was solely the efforts of our clerks. And so I want to personally acknowledge our clerk of the board, Nadia Hodgkins, and her entire team, and turn it over for a few words.
Thank you, Chair. I'm bossy only sometimes. I just want to put that on the record. Okay. Chair Ramos, members of the board, is with immense gratitude and heartfelt appreciation that I stand before you today to express thanks for the acknowledgement of this proclamation. The mission of the clerk of the board is to maintain the board of supervisors legislative history and provide administrative support to the members of the board of supervisors in response to the needs of the public. Therefore, the board's ability to function successfully is greatly influenced by providing exceptional customer service, responding to the public efficiently, and delivering quality performance. The office of the clerk of the board's division serves as the board's backbone to oversee and manage the administrative, legislative, and operational demands. Our customer service, commitment to the board, committees, and the public is to provide accurate and timely information, be attentive, courteous, and responsive, foster a spirit of cooperation and goodwill, value diversity, take accountability, responsibility, and pride in our work. The delivery of our commitment is made possible by the help of the clerk's deputies and the board staff, as our divisions tirelessly work together to provide quality public service, support, and business continuity. This proclamation is not just an honor for me, but a reflection of the collaborative efforts and shared vision that is dedicated to progress, service, and positive change. I'd like to recognize the clerk of the board team deputies, Greg Morgan, our senior deputy, who excels at managing and maintaining our assessment appeals board, Anthony Williams, who is prevailing with driving forward projects to modernize and create efficiencies for the clerk of the board and ease of access for the public, and our newest member, Paulette Cooper, who courageously has taken on managing and maintaining Napa County's 45 committees and commissions and approximately 380 members. It has been a pleasure serving you for the past four years. I'm committed to using this recognition as a catalyst for greater good, to inspire others, and contribute positively to the community. It serves as a reminder of the responsibilities that come with such an honor, and I am determined to uphold the standards that this proclamation represents. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. If the board will join me in the well, please. Next, we will take up our consent calendar for special districts. That includes items 5A through 5E. Are there any questions or requests to pull from the board? Seeing none, I'll open public comment on the special district consent, 5A through E. Seeing none in the boardroom, do we have any on the phone lines? Seeing no public comment, I will close public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and decision.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cottrell, second by Supervisor Gregory. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, on our consent items, I am pulling at the requests, I'm pulling items 6G and 6AD, which will be considered separately under item eight. Are there any other requests for pulling? G and AD. Seeing no other re-
Just a quick correction, they'll be taken under item nine.
Oh, sorry. Correction, under item nine. We are still moving around numbers, and I haven't fully committed them to my brain yet. Seeing no questions from the board, we will open public comment on consent excluding items 6G and AD.
Balance.
Seeing none in the boardroom, phone, no one on the phones. I will close public comment. I have a motion by Supervisor Gregory for the balance of the consent.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, we will take up public comment. This is public comment for, for all general public comment, and also for those items pulled. This is for 6G and 6AD. So if there's any public com- sorry.
This is just general public-
My apologies, my apologies. But, hold on tight, hold on tight. General public comment. My apologies. So this does not include 6G and 6AD, which will be taken up on nine, getting it. General public comment. You have three minutes on general public comment.
Good morning. Jim Hinton, 45 Spring Street, Napa, California. I've been away for a long time. I've been taking care of my dad here in the front row, Errol Hinton, who's been a Napa resident now for over 80 years. And being his primary care workers absorbed a lot of my time, and I don't have the, as much free time as I used to have to come down here and participate. My dad was diagnosed with sundowners, Alzheimer's dementia, and there's this idea that this stuff is incurable. And I have seen Kaiser pour the drugs down his throat and made him sicker than ever. But thankfully, I've been able to step up, keep looking, and ignore Kaiser, and we have my dad now on the road to recovery, where he is doing extremely well. Even though he was placed on hospice on October 11th, my dad has been down to Jack's Diner 22 days in a row and counting for biscuits and gravy every morning. And he's doing better than ever, and I'm very proud of him and, and his ability to overcome this terrible disease that I don't wish on anybody to have. It's horrible. But if anybody out there wants help, helping their loved ones, and you want to come to me, I'll, I'll tell you what we're doing that's making Dad a, a good guy. Secondly, I've been asking for a while, this body, the Napa City Council, what is the current salary of Visit Napa Valley CEO, President Lindsay Gallagher? And for months, nobody can tell me this. This is the money that comes from tax dollars that somebody's supposed to be watching, that nobody is. Well, I want to thank Mike Holcomb, Sr. He's recently sent me, he found it, people, Mike Holcomb, he got what you guys couldn't do. And according to salary.com, the CEO of Visit Napa Valley is making $776,172. $776,000 a year she's paying herself out of this money. That's more than the CEO and all you supervisors combined, probably. That's over three-quarter million dollars. No wonder nobody wants to be honest and tell us what's happening to this money. If this money is available for us to collect from the tourists, we should be raising our TOT 2% more, and we should be bringing that money in for ourselves instead of blindly handing it over to Lindsay Gallagher while she pays herself three-quarter million dollars.
Next speaker, please, for general public comment.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Chrissy Sanchez. I am an IHSS provider in Napa. I have been working for IHSS for the past seven years. I started working for one client, but now I have five. Sometimes I just struggle with five clients because two hours is not enough for them. I have taken them to the store's appointments, doctor's appointments, and sometimes it takes more than two hours. And when we're back home, they still want me to work for them to do house cleaning. Sometimes I don't get paid enough to do that, but I have to tell them no because I'm running late to run to another client. It's stressful. I struggle with five clients at the same time. I call them to let them know that I'm running late, and it's struggling to go through this for a minimum wage, plus IHSS does not pay us for gas money to take from one place to another. Gas is so expensive and everything's going up. Yeah, there are some days I just want to throw the towel and give up, especially when I see fast food getting paid from $20, $30 an hour. That's when I say to myself, why am I doing this here, still struggling? However, I love my clients and how to take care of them, and I provide for them, so it's so needed.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Arminda Sanchez.
Good morning. My name is Arminda Sanchez.
Le doy los buenos dias de la mesa de supervisores.
I say good morning to the members of the board.
Solo quiero pedir que consideren la propuesta del contrato.
I just want you to please consider the contract proposals.
Vivir en Napa haciendo 16 dólares por hora 95 centavos es difícil.
Living in Napa and making $16.95 an hour is really difficult.
Muchas de las veces no puedo pagar mis billes porque tengo que escoger cuál, cuáles podría pagar. Es importante que el condado de, de Napa aumente nuestro sueldo para cuidado de casa.
And so sometimes I cannot pay for my bills because I have to choose which bill to pay. It is important that the county increases our pay for the workers, for the in-home workers.
Y me preocupo de pagar por comida, electricidad, ya que todo es, es tan crisis muy alto.
I have to worry whether I'm going to put, pay for food or pay for my electricity now that everything has gone up so high and everything's so expensive.
Cuido mi hija. Mi nietecita con autismo, mi hija con epilepsia y retardo mental, y batallo con, como preparar, batallo con el sueldo.
So I take care of my daughter, my granddaughter with autism, and my daughter with epilepsy and, and intellectual disabilities. And I do, I, I do have to work, or have to, sorry, what's the word?
Se batalla.
So I'm struggling, sorry, I'm struggling with, with the little income that we are making.
Ya que el sueldo es tan pequeño que nos da en IHSS el programa.
Since the amount that IHSS gives us is so little.
Y a veces tengo que pensar en buscar otro trabajo para completar, para darles una vida de calidad más a ellas.
And I sometimes have to consider taking another job to be able to give a better quality of life to them.
Pero me preocupo ya que ellas tienen que tener su cuidado de calidad, y si nos dieran, nos apoyaran un poco más con lo justo del sueldo, que es muy justo, estaríamos más menos estresadas.
But I worry about the amount of care that they need all the time, and if we were paid more, we wouldn't have to worry about having to come up with more income to supplement that.
Ya que tendríamos, ya que pedimos por favor que nos aumenten, que nos apoyen, en que aumenten el sueldo.
Since we're asking for your support, and we're asking for an increase in our wages.
Para todos.
For all of us.
Okay, es todo. Gracias.
That's all. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Next speaker, please.
I'm continuing that IHSS line. Hello, my name is Jeannie Hutton, and I'm an IHSS worker as well. I provide care for my 12-year-old special needs son, Owen. I'm here to ask for a pay increase and also benefits for our essential work, and to share some of my personal challenges. As a single parent, the income from this job, and I have a little over 260 hours a month to care for Owen, is barely enough to survive on. I'm able to make ends meet because I have contract work that I do while he's at school during the day, and I also have a, a house, a partner in my home, and we share expenses. I don't get to take sick days. I don't have the option of a retirement with the IHSS benefits, and even if I did, at this current rate, I don't know if I could set enough aside for a retirement. Because of the shortage of in-home care workers, and I had to wait six months for a respite worker, sometimes I have to pay out of pocket for, to, to get a break from my son, and I pay up to $30 an hour. To give you a glimpse of the details of my work, my son is non-verbal, and at almost 13 years old, he's still toileting. We have terms in our house such as P P Geddon and punamis, and I'm going to leave those definitions to kind of let you guys figure those out. And I use those jokingly to describe how my day went, or in a lot of instances, how a string of days have gone when my washer and dryer work overtime. And I speak from a place of privilege because I have those appliances in my home. This work, caring for the most fragile members of our community, is physically, mentally, and emotionally challenging. I urge you guys not only to pay us what a fast food worker makes, but to provide us with a retirement plan and additional benefits so we can care for, not only create a better future for ourselves, but create a better future for our special needs children, disabled adults, and the seniors that we care for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker for general public comment.
So why should you pay more for IHSS? The reason why is that the IHSS is the iron wall that protects the disabled and the old in their health and safety needs. If you do not have a strong IHSS infrastructure, if you do not think of it as part of the medical system, then there's no way this county, Napa County, can get a hold on the growing expense for 911 calls, get a hold on the growing expense of hospital emergency calls. You just heard this previous speaker say that when she gets a replacement, she has to pay $30 versus the $16 that the county pays. Tens of thousands of IHSS hours are probably going on use in this county because no one wants to work as an IHSS worker because you make more money at Target. You get better sick leave at Target than you do, than you do as a IHSS worker. Even if you had worked as a IHSS worker in Napa County for 20 years, you still don't get the amount of sick leave pay that you get at Target, even for a new worker. The best and smart way to fiscal and manage the proceeds of the county budget is to invest in the IHSS infrastructure because you get so much value, and that's the best way the county, Napa County, can get a hold on the growing expense for 911 calls and emergency hospital calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for general public comment.
Good morning. Cesar Alvarado with IHSS Workers in Napa County. Just want to say that later today, you guys are going to have an opportunity to, to, to increase wages and to improve lives of members of this community. Also want to mention that November is actually Caregivers Month, National Caregivers Month. So let's do the right thing and, and celebrate them by giving them better wages and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for general public comment.
Good morning, Supervisors Kelly Anderson and Angwin. I'd like to thank the Public Works Department for completing pretty much the road paving in Angwin. It's really nice, and the new guard rail is really nice. A number of people have asked, when the big pile of the asphalt spoils that is stationed out there by James Creek- A number of people have asked when the big pile of the asphalt spoils that is stationed out there by James Creek out into Poe Valley. It's a really big pile of spoils and it is immediately adjacent to James Creek, to the one pool that is perennially has water in it and I'm sure that's a gelati issue, but it's still there and it's been there through a couple of rains. It'd be really nice if it was gone. I had a homeless woman living near me in the woods for the better part of a year. She lived in her car with her dog. The car wouldn't move. She was parked in land that people didn't visit and I did my best to ignore her for the better part of a year. Until these last few months, when I saw she was absolutely filthy and emaciated. I tried not to look. In the end, I looked because her dog was running away and it was the only thing she had. And I worked with Animal Control to get the dog and get it neutered and get it back. But while we live there in a community of vast wealth with wineries and castles around us, this person died, a drug-addled, mental illness, slow death in the woods. Until the last week, when we got her into the St. Helena Hospital and the social workers cared for her, they let us bring the dog to the hospital with her every day. But I do wanna bring to your attention that Kelly Dansforth, who lived her life in the Berriosa area, who grew up on the Gun Ranch on the east side of the lake and who had worked as a home health caregiver in Napa County, died two weeks ago in Napa County with no one around to care for her except for her immediate neighbors. And I hope we can do better so other people don't have to die alone in the woods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for general public comment.
Good morning, Michelle Benvenido-Wang-Gurz of Napa County. We just wanna mention that we feel the county is missing an important opportunity to share the most current groundwater data. The Department of Water Resources' October 2023 Semi-Annual Groundwater Conditions Update that includes data through August 31st of this year, shows a remarkable improvement in groundwater levels compared to 2022 with an estimated 3.8 million acre-feet of recharge capacity in water year 2023. It is also worth noting that complaints about Napa's extraction rate should be put into context as the Central Valley accounts for ninety percent of groundwater extraction in California and was responsible for ninety-one percent of groundwater storage declines in 2022. This isn't to say that we shouldn't continue to embrace water conservation as a way of life, but we should all be working with the same facts and acknowledge that last year's wet winter replenished surface water reservoirs and interrupted the three-year drought. While we'll gain more insight after April 1st, when Napa releases its annual groundwater report, the initial data from DWR's semi-annual report is encouraging. And the DWR wells in Napa County indicate positive trends in groundwater storage. Finally, it's important to recognize Napa's advantage lies in its main agricultural focus on viticulture, which not only uses less water than most crops, but is the backbone of Napa County economically, environmentally, and communally. And we need to remember that. We all need, we need all three to achieve true sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker for general public comment. Sir, speaker for general public comment.
Hi, good morning, Board of Supervisors and everyone. My name is Mr. B. Jackson. I'm with SEU, SEIU Local 2015, healthcare providers, in-home healthcare providers and nursing home. And I am here to appeal to you to feel our pain. We are of great service to the community, the communities that we serve as we are the first line of prevention and defense, if you will, for our people with disabilities and our seniors. Our job is easily overlooked because we're invisible when it comes to healthcare because we're in the home. And that's unfortunate that more people don't understand exactly what's going on in our neighborhoods with our neighbors. To share our responsibility with community is, first and foremost, our involvement in, as I said, the prevention of emergency room care and transportation. That's like number one in terms of cost and our cost-effective and efficiency in that prevention. The average medical emergency in emergency room is about a thousand dollars before you sign on the line, before you get the six-hundred-dollar overpriced Tylenol that you could buy over the counter. That's if you take them there or the recipient, if they make it there by their own means. If they go by ambulance, that's about a thousand dollars basic. And then that's itemized, light siren, oxygen cuff, fluids, EKG, et cetera, et cetera. So it's obvious that, in my experience, I've dealt with seniors, I haven't had the pleasure of dealing with our young people, but I've been involved in healthcare for twenty years in that I've been able to coin slip and fall, over and under medicating, and dehydration. Those three things land our seniors and people with disabilities back in the hospital, back-to-back, back-to-back. So you can go in, get treated for one thing, come back, be disoriented, over-medicate, under-medicate, forget to take your medicine altogether, and you'll go right back, sometimes even in the same day. So that prevention, the first line, is a direct impact on taxpayer dollars that we save the counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Are there any other speakers for general public comment? Seeing none in the boardroom, I'll turn to the phone lines. Thank you. I'll close general public comment and we will move on to Board of Supervisor reports and announcements. If you've been following, certainly since 2017, this board has made a commitment to continuously improve our fire suppression and mitigation and preparedness efforts. We have increased to aerial support, we have increased the number of firefighters, and we have made continual investments in fuel reduction projects through the support of fourteen million dollars to the Firewise Foundation. Earlier this year, the board set forth priorities to create a Fire Services Administration that could help us oversee everything that is coming our way. One of them, which is really great news, of a fifty-million-dollar grant from FEMA, a brick grant that's gonna help us with infrastructure and fuels mitigation. And spending fifty million dollars in three years is going to be tough work and that is going to be in coordination with Fire Marshaling, which now is out of CAL FIRE and within the County and Program Administration. So I wanna take this moment to recognize some members of our team that have joined us in this new Fire Services Administration. I would just ask that they just stand up to be recognized. The first one is not a stranger, but coming into the county fold, and that is Fire Marshal Jason Downs, who was promoted from Deputy Fire Marshal with CAL FIRE. Thank you so much for joining the county team, Jason. Another person not a stranger, was station lead at our Angwin Fire Station, and that is J.R. Rogers. And he is joining us as a program, as a project manager within Fire Administration. And the Director of Fire Administrative Services is Dave Shu, who is not able to join us as he's actually away on business right now. And he is retired from CAL FIRE, previously a consultant in this very space. So we are excited to bring this team together to start deploying the strategies set forward by this board. Thank you so much for joining us today. Any Board of Supervisor reports and announcements from my colleagues? Supervisor Gregory.
It's been a few weeks since we've met, so there's a lot built up, but I'll just focus on a few things on the sustainable, or I should say the renewable resource end of things. Two things going on at Napa San, I think I've mentioned it here a few times, but we're in contract with a company that's set to install the largest floating solar installation in the country, right here in Napa. When you go over the bridge, look to your right, heading south on 29, all those ponds out there, a good number of them might be covered by floating solar. And then on the MCE front, the last meeting, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, we approved two new facilities, or approved a contract with two new battery storage facilities. Battery storage is a huge part of the solution. They gotta store that solar that's made all day. And so we just added two main installations to our portfolio. So those are two great things for Napa. Another really cool thing that I was, Supervisor Cottrell and I attended, was something called Napa Success Accelerator. This was born from some grant money we gave to the business community, SBDC, not SBDC, but the small business group facilitated a grant program to businesses that applied for it. We sat in on presentations from these businesses on what they did with the money and how they're improving their business to be more successful. It was landscapers, it was some daycare providers, it was an interior decorator and a bunch of others. But it was really great to see the results of something the county did, a new thing we did that we hadn't done before. Last is, just a fun thing, was last weekend, the Ridge, Bear Ridge Trail, once a year at least, comes into Napa and picks a project and we worked at Skyline Park. There's a section of River to Ridge Trail which got really out of hand. A lot of side trails, social trails, that don't make a lot of sense that are eroding. So we came in and decommissioned those and fixed it all up, right before the rain. So it was worked up perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you Chair. I wanted to report on the broadband consortium that I sit on as a representative of this group. Again, that's a four-county consortium, Sonoma, Marin, Napa, and Mendocino County, all working toward improving broadband access for residents and trying to find the best way to access the federal grant money that's available. So as we covered on our consent calendar today, Napa County has an MOU with Comcast to pursue a broadband deployment project and that would be coming from the federal funding account to fund a last-mile project. But something that came out of this most recent consortium meeting was looking at each county's project proposals that will be going forward. And the goal of this broadband-for-all is to provide maximal access for unserved communities. So one of the things that we were looking at is some projects that overlap or already target communities that are served. So in our county, AT&amp;T has a lot of projects in the eastern part of the county that would be serving new residents, which is great. But there was some concern about parts of their proposal that serve existing members, excuse me, existing residents. So that's a likely letter that this consortium will be drafting to the CPUC to make sure that we're spending money on new underserved residents rather than existing customers. And then, as Supervisor Gregory said, that presentation from the SBDC was wonderful to see the small business ideas. And also, I just wanna give a shout-out to Mike Bassane, who was a great coach to all these business applicants in improving their business plan. That's all for me.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you. A couple of different meetings. I wanted to let you know that the first five commission has completed their three-year strategic plan. I'm happy to send out copies, but it can also be found on their website. The Air District discussed many items, one of which was the status of their air filtration program through Breathe, California. And Napa has not been able to access that program. We are not a county that's included, so I was advocating for that and noted that about twenty-seven percent of Napa residents suffer from asthma as compared to fifteen percent of Californians. At the Climate Action Committee, we're moving forward, creating a flexible path reach code. And it was very exciting at the last meeting to hear about an opportunity through Berkeley Labs to become the first site in the U.S. to do on-the-ground, real-time GHG monitoring. This can become a model for other communities, but also provide us with excellent real-time data to move forward as we create our own regional climate action plan.
Thank you. And I will add Supervisor Cottrell and I had a chance to speak at the Wildfire Summit hosted by the Community Foundation, the Vittners and the grape growers that really talked about what we've done and what are the next steps and what do we need to keep on doing to create a more fire-resilient community. And I was thoroughly impressed. There are NASA people that were speaking to us about technology and we heard updates on policy and a lot on insurance, which we know is a very big concern. So that was very informative. As many know and Supervisor Pedros is well informed, that Highway 37 is a big undertaking and BCDC, the Bay Conservation Development Commission, was supposed to have a hearing on the updates and proposals for Highway 37, but that actually was postponed until next month. If there are no other updates from the board, I'm going to take out of order right now and I'm gonna ask our Superintendent of Schools Barbara Nemko to join us at the podium for Item 11B. And this is the Napa County Office of Education, presentation of the Williams Monitoring Visits in Napa County.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you all know this drill. Every year, I come and give you the Williams Report. This is mandated by a state law that happened as the result of a lawsuit against the state by a student in San Francisco Unified School District. And so every year, the county offices are tasked with visiting the schools that are in the lowest three deciles on tests, as well as any school with fifteen percent or more of teachers who have anything less than a clear California credential. So this year, the schools were McPherson Elementary, American Canyon Middle School, Snow Elementary, Silverado Middle School, and Stonebridge Charter School. Stonebridge was on there because of the credentialing requirement. The others were on there because of test scores. So we send a team in. There were four people from the County Office of Education and we have a team from Napa Valley Unified that goes with us. And we check to make sure that all students have access to instructional materials in the four core subjects to use in school and at home. We also check to make sure that all the facilities are in good shape. And if there are any things that need correcting, we report it to the school district and make sure that they take care of it. And as usual, it's the Sunshine Report. All students had access to all materials that they needed and the only facilities issue that we found was a piece of playground equipment. And by the, almost by the time they got back to the office, it had been fixed. The district is very good about making sure that their facilities are in excellent shape and playground equipment is well-used, so occasionally something is going to get broken. So that's my report. All is good. We wanna commend Napa Valley Unified School District and particularly Mike Pearson, who's in charge of facilities for making sure that things are shipshape. And as well, Pat Andres Jennings, who's the Associate Superintendent, who makes sure that everybody has the appropriate books and materials. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Nemko. To see any questions from the board at this time, I will take public comment on Item 11B. Seeing none in the boardrooms, on the phone lines. Thank you. I will close public comment and I thank you, Dr. Nemko, for joining us.
As always, a pleasure. Thank you.
We will now return to Item 9, and these are the discussion of items pulled from the consent calendar. We will start with Item 7G. We will take these in order. So the two pulled are 7G and 7AD. Joining us is our Assistant CEO, Ms. Becky Craig. There were some questions of just, I'll let you start off by kind of the buildup of how we got to this proposal and really what we hope to find through this consultation contract.
Thank you Chair and Supervisors. Becky Craig, Assistant CEO.
This is an item that has been before the board a couple of times. Back in the spring, we completed the Fire Master Plan, and at that time, the board gave direction that they wanted to move to a next step of studying organizational models. We did bring back and draft RFP for that discussion in July and received direction, and then we released the RFP. This is the conclusion of that request for proposals. We did receive three proposals, and we scored them based on federal criteria because we will be proceeding with multiple contracts moving forward in the fire services world, and we wanted to maintain that consistency. And based on that evaluation, we recommend Matrix Consulting for this job.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you Ms. Craig for that information. Just wanted to know where the 106,000 is budgeted?
It is in our central services budget that we use for non-department-specific activities.
Okay. And can we hear a little bit more information about how this contract will work with the new staff that we have? I think that, I probably thought our new staff is going to do a lot of this work. So just kind of want to talk a little bit about who's doing what and how the two are going to be interacting.
Right. Simultaneously, we were recruiting for the new staff as well as getting this RFP underway. The intent was that now that the staff is on board, that they will be administering this agreement, so they will be overseeing the consultant and providing the resources for them. And with the intent that we will get the results of this about May or June of next spring, which will then provide us one year remaining within the CAL FIRE agreement to make determinations on how to proceed when that expires.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Ms. Craig for helping us walk through it. I had had some other questions too, some of which I think Supervisor Gallagher just asked and were answered. So one of the, because I also had a concern about the timeline, because it seems, I know that we had given direction for this RFP and then hired the fire administrator, and it's important to me that this, that our fire administrator team is actively involved here. And so it feels a little out of sequence, although I understand that's how we kind of launched it. But so that's kind of where some of my questions go. And then, we've also just recently reviewed the AP Triton Master Fire Plan. And so we had a discussion about that, but I don't, I'm not sure if we gave specific direction or had resolution. So can you talk a little bit about how that dovetails in here?
Yes. That is with our fire department right now with CAL FIRE, because the majority of that was related to operations. And they are reviewing those recommendations and will be bringing forth not only items that have already been implemented, but those that they will be recommending in future years. So those will be part of future budget discussions primarily, but as we need to make any policy decisions, those will be brought to the board for consideration.
Okay. And then can you tell us a little bit about Matrix's background, and who else applied, and why
Sure.
Matrix was chosen?
Right. Matrix is a consulting firm that consults for government entities, so their expertise is within government operations, and they will review public safety, community development, various areas. They have significant experience in this area. I did do reference checks with multiple who had recent jobs with them and received positive reviews. We also did receive two other proposals, one from a consulting firm, MGT, who actually have other work going on with right now in the county, but they were not the best proposal based on the scoring. As well as CPSM, which is the Center for Public Safety Management. It's a national organization, and while they do work across the country, there's also was not the most competitive response that we received.
Got it. And then, just to follow up on that AP Triton study that we had, for me, I found that had a lot of great information about response times and things like that. And the recommendations that it made were not necessarily linked to our limited financial resources. And so can you talk to me a little bit about how this this study will take into account our current financial status?
Correct. That is one of the key parts of the scope of work, is to not only look at what models are out there as options, but to do an evaluation of the cost and the governance models related to those options. And all of that will be provided in the report that is prepared by the consultant.
Great. And I think my final question is kind of just more situational awareness, because Lafco is going through its own municipal service review, looking at local fire services and also EMS. And so it would be my hope that if we're doing multiple studies, I mean, those are different organizations looking at them, but that we can cross-reference and gain data from both of those and not duplicate data.
Correct. Already, we have met at the city manager, county executive level with the Lafco Director to share the resources that we have already, such as our AP Triton study, and other cities have similar studies also. So that was to help Lafco not have to reinvest in those materials, but to start. And we also talked about sharing resources and materials as we move forward. If studies are going on simultaneously, I don't know how much they're going to be, but we're going to ensure to the degree possible not to duplicate services. So they have our scope of work and are aware of what we and another entity are doing at this time.
Great. That's really helpful. And then, I think my final question, you know, in my district, I have many volunteer fire stations and a lot of very active and committed volunteers. And I know, talking with our Napa County Fire Department, that agency is looking at how it can kind of modernize and bring into better organization our volunteer team as well as our professional paid firefighters. So can you talk to me about how, you know, so that's kind of a decision path that Chief Markucci and his team are on. How does this Matrix study and what our fire admin will be looking at? How do those things work together?
So we are aware that there are multiple projects going on right now, and wanting to ensure that everybody stays in the same room. I've got meetings scheduled for that very discussion to ensure that everyone has the awareness and is contributing and not overstepping or impeding, for that matter. But yes, we, out of the AP Triton study of the Fire Master Plan, as well as the grand jury, we have made it a priority to look at our volunteer model and are moving towards a paid call model. Per the discussions that have occurred to date, that is still preliminary and will be continued to be developed and communicated and brought to this board for consideration.
Great. And then, again, this is focused on fire suppression, but we also know how much work we need to be doing, and we are doing, on fire prevention. So does the Matrix study
It incorporates both.
Great.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other questions from the board, I'll open public comment on 7G. Seeing none in the boardroom, I'll turn to the phone lines. No public comment, I will close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and decision.
I'll move this item.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cottrell, second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Ms. Craig. Next item that was pulled from the consent was item 7AD. And with us to walk us through this journey is our Director of Public Works, Steve Letterer, and our Concessionaires Manager, Ms. Lee Sears. Yes, Sears, I know. Two L- Lee S's in your department. We've got to keep them straight.
Yeah.
Excellent. So I will start off, there were a number of requests for this item to be pulled. So perhaps if we can start off Mr. Letterer with an overview of how we got here, and then we can take up any questions from the board, and then we'll listen to public comment.
Exactly. Thank you Chair Ramos, members of the board, Steve Letterer, Public Works Director here with Lee Sears, our Lake Berry Essa concessions manager. I am going to give an update of how we got to where we are, and then I'm going to turn it over to Lee, who's going to talk a little bit about the specific proposal that Margaritaville put forward for the Steel Canyon Resort. So going back, not all the way to the beginning, that would be 1957, I'm going to jump to, in the late teens here, 2017, 2018, the Bureau of Reclamation, the BOR, or the feds, had made many attempts to redevelop the resorts at the lake, and we're here talking specifically about Steel Canyon, but the other resorts as well. And this board offered to the BOR, for the county to take over that resort development, control of that activity. And we signed an agreement in February of 2020 with the BOR to take over that development. The board voiced an interest in controlling the development of the resorts. In 2021, the Board of Supervisors and county staff released a request for proposal, an RFP, for developers and operators for the various resorts. There were three submitters for the Steel Canyon Resort. There were submitters on the other resorts as well, but again, we're not here to talk about those today. So there, the three submitters on the Steel Canyon Resort were Sun, Margaritaville, and Sun Tex. The staff evaluating the RFP determined that Sun was the best proposal. We brought that to the board, and the board signed a exclusive negotiating agreement, an ENA, with Sun. And that ENA process is exactly what we're here to do today. So Sun worked under that ENA for a couple of years, and then, as the board knows, in March of this year, for various reasons, Sun backed out of the agreement. So staff at Board Direction continued with the process, and we went to our number two proposer for Steel, which was Margaritaville. So Margaritaville was still, even though two years had gone by, Margaritaville was still interested in moving forward with an ENA, an exclusive negotiating agreement. And that's what brought us here today. Margaritaville is a nationally known and operating operator of resorts. Not surprisingly by its name, founded by the late, great Jimmy Buffett. And they are working with, and I may get the pronunciation, Y Tim Napa LLC, which is a developer working with Margarita, Margaritaville on this. This is the same process that we did do with all the other resorts. I mentioned the name Sun Tex. Sun Tex actually won the contract or the ENA for the Berry Essa Point. They are about 18 months or so into that process? 12 to 18 months into that process. They're working on their design, they're working on their environmental, and we're very hopeful that in the not-too-near future, that, I mean, not next week and not next month, but in the near future, that we'll be bringing an actual concession agreement to the board for Sun Tex and Berry Essa Point. As it happens, Sun Tex is also operating Pleasure Cove. So, let's see. I did get one question on the environmental process. So as has happened with the other resorts, the process is set up so that the the developer, as they, in the process of developing their process, will be doing an EIR process as they do their development. There is one difference, if you will, as opposed to like a typical winery project, and this is mentioned in the staff report. On the typical winery process, ordinarily, county staff either does or controls or has the direct contracts with the environmental, the EIR provider, the EIR consultants. For most of those projects, for instance, when a winery comes to the county, the project comes to us, when I'll say about, you know, 80, 90% baked, if you will. There's a property owner, they've been on the property, they know what buildings, they know what they want to do. In this process here, although the, if you will, the boundaries of the project are very well-defined by the Record of Decision, the rod that the BOR passed, which also then mirrors our own RFP. The reality is, the developer in this case has really only studied the site to the point of making the proposal. So this, this design, if you will, is probably 15 to 20% baked, as opposed to a typical winery process. So as such, as the developer moves forward, it's kind of an iterative process between designing, environmental study, modifying, designing, environmental study. So it's important in this case that the environmental team be embedded with the design team. That doesn't mean that the county won't have interaction with the environmental consultants. It doesn't mean that we don't have control and oversight of their work products, and obviously, staff and ultimately the board have final approval of those work products. But it's just, it's a slightly different process than what we normally see, like I said, with kind of the typical winery that comes to us, which is why we are proposing to do the environmental the way we are. And as I mentioned, it's consistent with what we've done for all the other developers as well. This is what Sun Tex is doing right now and have been doing for the last 18 months. And again, part of the reason for doing that is, although speed is not the most important thing we're doing here, the speed is of some essence. Here, we did sign an agreement with the BOR indicating that we would move forward. They're actually paying for half of our costs for a period of time, but that expires. And if we don't, if we don't continue to move forward, they'll, well, first off, they'll stop paying half our expenses because that does expire, and also, at some point, they'll just take the resorts back if we don't move forward. It's an important, because this board has made a commitment to the community to revitalize that area. We've certainly heard many comments over the years about how important it is to get the resorts back up and operating. It's important to the Napa Berry Essa Resort Improvement District, the water, wastewater system that's out there. The developer will pay fees, impact fees, or do what's necessary such that what's needed to operate the resort will be paid for by the resort. So from that standpoint, it's not a panacea to all of the water, wastewater problems out there. But essentially, the resort will act as almost as many accounts as exist right now. So you have 385 some odd parcels out there that are paying for Enbridge's operations. You bring the resort on, that number equivalent goes way, way up. So you have many more, effectively many more payers paying, amortizing the fixed costs. So there's a net benefit to the district, and there's a net benefit to the rate payers who are paying for the district. And finally, from the county side, as I said, right now, we are a cost center. The feds are paying for part of our costs, but we're paying for the rest of it. And the sooner we can get up and operating and start receiving revenue from the resorts, we'll become, I was going to say profit center, which is not really true, but we'll become a revenue center, and that revenue not only goes to covering the county costs, but goes to benefits out there, including supporting a new police station, improved fire services. Perhaps roads, if I mentioned roads, roads would be a good place to put some of that money. So, so like I said, speed is not the only thing we're doing here, but speed is relevant to this discussion. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lee, who's going to talk a little bit about the specific proposal that Margaritaville has put forward.
Can you hear me? There you go. So I think you guys have the proposal in front of you to look at. So this, they were our number two in this RFP. So this, they were our number two in this RFP process back in 2021. And in their proposal, I think the total amount of money invested should be, will propose was roughly around $95 million. And they'll do all of the infrastructure upgrades and tie into Enbridge as another customer. They will turn Steel back into sort of the resort it used to be back in the day. We'll have, I think, about a 50-slip marina, we'll have gas docks, restaurants, RV parking, It'll be sort of a nice resort once it's up and operating. It is a franchise, so it will have the Margaritaville brand, and that will be approved by the BOR as well. They have seen this proposal and have blessed it as well. Any questions?
Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Can you tell us why Margaritaville came in second originally? And maybe what were the detracting factors? And have you talked to them about those? And are those things that will be changed or rectified in this, in this, you know, going-forward period?
Yes, there weren't any sort of major factors. It was a scoring system. Steve was on the board with me as well. There was a scoring system for all of the bids that came in. And the scoring system was from, I think, what was it, operating infrastructure investment?
Yeah, there, there was a series, you're, we're going back three years now.
I know, I know, it's been a while.
Yeah, but it was, how much were they investing? There was a kind of an overall aesthetics score. There was a financial qualification score. Did they actually have the, the financial backing to do what they said they were going to do? There was a previous experience score. I think those were the, the main ones. And I, and I will say, as I remember, that all three of the bids were, were pretty close. We were really happy with, with all three of them. That wasn't the case, actually, with some of the other resorts. We got some bids that were like, eh, that ain't going to work.
Yeah, so they met like a minimum standard for you.
Yeah, but all, all three were pretty close. I think we, I'm pretty sure we were unanimous at the time, but, but we, but they were, they were all, they were all pretty close.
Extremely. So there wasn't like a negative factor on one as opposed to another. It was just sort of the overall scoring based on everyone's opinion. And they came in within, you know, a few points of each other. So it wasn't, there wasn't a.
Okay, thanks. The Margaritaville properties that I've, you know, been looking at online are, you know, they're very large, they have a lot of accessory structures, big centers for events and whatnot. Can you give us any comparison to what they're proposing as opposed to other properties that they have? And how much control do we have over the scale of this?
I, it's not going to have, I think, a convention center or anything like that. It's still an RV camping, the lamping site, there'll be a restaurant, there'll be a 50-slip marina, roughly, gas station, there'll be a little convenience store. And the BOR also has to approve the final design-build plan for this as well. And so it'll have to fit on the site as it is. I don't think it's going to, I don't think there's going to be any issues with size as opposed to it being sort of a bigger site as opposed to what it used to be on that site back in 2010. So it'll stay fairly, it'll fit the site itself. And I think in the proposal, it'll sort of show you the layout of how many cabins there'll be and how many RV sites there'll be and the restaurant itself.
In, in terms of also the, the question of, of control, so what we're, what we're doing today is, like, like I said, an exclusive negotiating agreement. What that essentially says is we won't go talk to anybody else. It doesn't bind us to say yes at the end, it doesn't bind them to go forward with it either, but it does lock us in as, as partners. We do have control in the sense that the original BOR Record of Decision, if you will, sets a box around, because there was an environmental study that done, that was done associated with that. Our own RFP sets something of a box. But besides that, there is some amount of flexibility, if you will. Obviously, I say obviously, perhaps the bigger, the bigger it gets, there could be financial benefits and, you know, a certain scale that comes with that. The board, you know, might want to see something smaller, but if we get too small, it won't pencil anymore either. So we're not locked into a specific number of cabins or a specific number of slips. There, there's a high and a low, there's a box there. But there is, again, this is a negotiating agreement. It's not a, a final operating agreement, so the board still does have discretion to, to influence. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gregory.
Chair. A few things, just for context, can you just tell us the status of the other concession areas?
Yes, sure. So Steel Canyon and Spanish Flat right now are under an interim concession agreement. So they, those two sites will be operating through this process until their environmental studies are done and they start breaking ground. Berryessa Point is with Sun Tex. They are about a year and a half, year and 12 months, a year and six months, yeah, somewhere around there. And their environmental studies, they should be breaking ground sometime next year, hopefully, end of next year. Monticello did go out for bid, we did get one proposal, and we're sort of in negotiating status with them right now, looking at their development and sort of where we are with that. And then we will eventually go with an ENA with them as well.
And which, which areas do, does Sun Tex have tied up?
Sun Tex has Berryessa Point, and they have Pleasure Cove. Now Pleasure Cove, Markley Cove, and Poota Canyon are still under Fed oversight. I, I think in the MPA, Napa County gets all seven of the sites. Right now, I have four of them. And so those other three I will take within the next, I think, five to six years is when those get turned over to Napa County.
Okay, thank you. So if we're out for bid on Monticello, did we consider going out to bid for, again, for this one?
No, because in our, our RFP process, Sun was number one. And so then we'd have to look at number two and three before we would go back out to RFP. So we have to sort of stay within the process of the RFP process that we did back in 2021. So Margaritaville was our number two.
We have to? What says?
I think, I think that's part of the RFP process, as we sort of follow those guidelines.
Director Letter?
It, it was the process we chose to take. If the board, well, for instance, if the board were to reject this agreement today, like I said, the third bidder was Sun Tex, they already have the two sites, we're not interested in one developer controlling too many sites, so then we would be at an, back in an RFP process.
Right. Just concerned that we're, we're tying ourselves to this for 24 months? This exclusive negotiating period?
Yeah, that's, so that gives them the right to do all their environmental studies.
Yeah, it's, it's a long time. And the way that the, the due diligence would go, being controlled by the developer, I would guess it's even more proprietary than the last time we went through this. So it's potential we, we take 24 months, can't get there, and all the progress made, we don't get access to. Due diligence comes with a lot of effort and work and deliverables, and it, it, it can carry forward if it's shared along the way. So I'm, I'm just a little concerned about that. That's it for now, thanks.
Well, just, just a thought on that is, we did receive a, a good deal of the work that Sun did.
That's right.
During their period. So, so that was beneficial. And you're correct, we're tying ourselves to this group. But if we went out through, to an RFP process and showed somebody, we would be.
The same.
Tying ourselves to that. So it's, it's the same process. And I had another brilliant point, but it, it left me.
And the 24 months, just to be sure, it's an 18-month, they have a six-month extension. And in that time, they've already, Margaritaville has been given, any of the sites, same with Sun Tex, any of the studies that were done by Sun that could beneficial, that they'd already spent all this money on and spent all this time on, had been given to these developers so that it could further along their process and speed it up a little bit and sort of get them breaking ground, which is the goal. And that's the goal with the feds as well. I mean, it's a five-year agreement and we're three years in.
Yeah, I, I did actually remember the other point that I was going to make. When we went out for the RFP the first time, I mentioned, you know, it was, it was 2020, interest rates were low, yes, I mean, COVID was happening, but when we went out with the RFP, I think we had three, four, five, we had six or seven, I think, individual bidders on the various sites. The, the bidding atmosphere, if you will, is dramatically different today because of the, primarily because of interest rates and construction costs and whatnot. So we, when we went out for RFP on Monticello, we only had one. So I guess what I'm saying is I, I think we have a qualified burden hand, and I'm not sure that going out for RFP would, would dramatically change that flock at this point.
Any other questions? Supervisor Gregory? Okay. Supervisor Petros.
Thank you, Chair. And are representatives from Margaritaville here?
Yes.
Okay. So, look, I'm having flashbacks of all the monthly meetings Supervisor Dylan, we're on to reach this point and trying to manage expectations. And not a lot of folks believe that we would get here, and we are. So to me, I look at anyone that wants to do business in this area as an incredible opportunity to make sure it's done fair, responsibly, and it's a win-win. And I think that's what we've been committed to. What I see here is, I think it's a good proposal, I'm interested in learning more. I think we have to balance flexibility with economics of someone wanting to do business. We've done this dance before, and there have been times when it doesn't reach a good outcome. And I want to make sure that as we're doing this, community meetings in Lake Berryessa have to be critical, because we get supervisor, I think Control and I get a lot of questions when folks don't know what's going on, there's a lot of anxiety around it. I think this is not mass-scale development, I think this is appropriate development with the recreational component, which I think complements Napa Valley very well. So I'm not interested, interested in starting over. I want to continue this. I think it allows us to understand each other a little bit more. But again, the community outreach and touch point, I think it's going to be very key. And we also know that we have some very severe infrastructure challenges in Lake Berryessa. Some of us that we've had to provide loans for, we've identified resort development, recreational development as a way to also bridge that gap. So I think it, there's a lot of benefits to continuing down this path. But if the representatives from Margaritaville are here, it would be great to hear from them a little bit, to hear their excitement, what their visions are, if the chair, through the chair, if that's appropriate, I think that would be good to hear.
Yes. Sit here. Do you have another chair? I'll come up here, you two sit here. I'll introduce, this is Tim Wilkins.
Good morning. We formed a relationship with Margaritaville four years ago with the anticipation of them expanding in California. We have done a number of projects here locally, which several of you are aware of. And we just think that Margaritaville is just a good fit for Lake Berryessa. It's not an oberge, it's not a Best Western, it's just a nice middle-road type of operation that we think is, you know, a good fit. Here with me too is a gentleman from JLL who's providing the financing. So we can represent to you that we've got a qualified development team. George Gervin has been selected as the resort designer. And, you know, he's known worldwide for some of his, his projects and developments and be happy to answer any specific questions you have.
Just on the financing, because, you know, someone mentioned rates, rates are cyclical. But in terms of, for you all, I'm assuming you have the financial wherewithal to whether a high-rate environment, even if there's another rate shock?
In the last three months, we've closed in excess of $40 million of construction financing loans on other projects.
Good. And again, if, if you are selected and this materializes, my expectation is that you also have community meetings and you touch base with the community, because there is a lot of interest from neighbors there that want to be part of this experience as well.
Yeah, I, I've, I've lived in Napa for 25 years and been involved. I oversaw the grand jury for five years, I coached U.S. sports teams, we've given out scholarships, and we're, we're a pretty well-known quality.
Thank you for being interested.
Thank you.
Those are my questions.
Supervisor Petros.
Thank you, Chair, and, and thanks to Mr. Wilkins for being here. It's, you know, learning about this, and I appreciate Supervisor Petros' point about a lot of meetings that you and Supervisor Dylan have spent getting us to this point. So I had, I'm just looking at the numbers to familiarize myself with the scale of it a little bit. So maybe I'll start there. Well, first of all, actually, I think I'll go back and say, you mentioned that you have done different projects in, in the local community. So could you tell us a little bit about the background and maybe some successful completed projects?
Sure, the largest one I was involved with was the Meritage. I think, actually, Ryan, you were the engineer that worked with us on the, the, you did a lot of work with us on the project itself when we were partnering with Shell Vacations. We did River Point, which is a vacation club project. I did the original permitting on Calistoga Ranch with Rob Caldwell and Joe Peatman. We've done, I did the Southern Crossing Office Complex, we did the Venture Commerce Center down at the Corporate Park, we did the Townhouse Project on California Boulevard. I mean, you know, there's, there's, we've been, like I said, we've been actively involved in the community for over 20 years.
Yeah, no, that's great, I appreciate hearing that. And, you know, also building on what Supervisor Petros said about the need for kind of ongoing communication with the community there, I think would be really important. So I'm happy to hear that. And then back to Steve and Lee, one of the things, as I'm looking at the numbers here, it's a proposal, and as I understand, you're saying these things aren't cast in stone, this is an initial proposal that could shift. 175 one-bedroom cottages of park model, and then 150 one-bedroom bungalow cottages, and then 100 two-bedroom bungalow cottages. Can you help us kind of compare and contrast that to the previous project?
Previous project in reference to Sun?
Sun, yes.
It's similar.
Yeah.
Because it has to fit, besides, the feds have to approve it as well, it has to.
I'm sorry, it has to fit sort of the footprint that was previously there. The feds want that, and so do we. It's sort of, it's easier in the NEPA-SEQUAL process for them, and they sort of stay within the same footprint that was previously there. It, it, it helps with everything to get approved. And so I think all of their models are in.
Yeah, those, that, that model is three years old, so everything's going to be reevaluated and updated and, and probably improved. The other important element too is we're, we're planning on putting up to 100% of employee housing on site.
Yeah, I noticed that, that call-out for employee housing, I appreciate that, because that will be really important over there. And then, I guess the other question, and this is for you, Steve, we, you mentioned that, you know, if we take this step forward today, then we're committing to an exclusive negotiating process. And at the same time, I think what you described is that the Y Tim would go off and work on its design and work on its environmental. What kind of active negotiation touchpoints do you see the board or the county having over that time? And, and if, you know, if we've got this concern about making sure we're staying in the loop, could we build in, you know, a few midpoint check-ins along the way?
Yeah, so just to jump back two or three questions, I will say, what is being proposed here is dramatically smaller than what was there in 2000-whatever, when the previous resort shut down. That'll be the case on, on all the sites, those, those sites were.
Huge.
Dramatically overbuilt, and these are, this is way smaller than that. So in terms of, of check-in, Lee, Lee actually, I mean, she lives here in Napa, but she pretty much lives at the lake and, and lives with, with the developer. She's on sites, on the sites, I mean, every week regularly and is talking with the developers on a regular basis. So from a staff standpoint, the interaction is, is, you know, relatively constant, really.
It's in the ENA as well, that they have to give updates.
Say that in the microphone, Lee.
In the ENA, it does state that, that all of the developers, so including Sun Tex as well, has to give updates, whether they're quarterly, monthly, just depending on whatever milestone they've hit, they either let me know.
Yeah, and we could certainly come back to the board, say, I don't know, every six months or nine months or something like that, and provide an update to the board on all the sites, just kind of the, the status. Could be a written update, maybe, maybe we just, you know, could be a written update, we could come back and do something like this, whatever, whatever's kind of necessary to just kind of keep the board in the loop. to just kind of keep the board in the loop.
Yeah, that's helpful, I mean, I think you've heard this from the other board members too, that it's so important for our community to have this project, or a project going forward at Berriessa, it's meaningful for our investment in all the infrastructure there and helping residents out there too, so. But I don't, what I don't want to have happen is that we don't have enough touchpoints along the way, so that we, you know, are not tracking and providing input along the way.
Right, you don't want us to show up with a fully baked pie that you don't like, right? So neither do we.
Okay, I think that's a lot of feedback from the board. Don't see any other questions from the board at this time, I'll open public comment on item 7 AD.
I'm Carol Coonsey, I live in Berriessa Highlands, I've been there since 1996. I need some clarification on one point, could I ask Steve a question?
You can go ahead, do your public comment, and then the board can direct staff to answer a question if necessary, thank you.
Well, the general plan distinguishes between nature-based and urban recreation. Nature-based recreation takes place in nature, it's significantly focused on the natural environment, and it includes walking, hiking, you know, basically all of that stuff, swimming, camping in tents, rustic cabins. Urban recreation includes recreation that takes place in highly improved parks and recreational facilities. And some of the items that they list as indicative of being urban recreation is the issues of courts, like the pickleball courts that they want, and the volleyball courts, and the bocce ball courts, paved walking paths, and swimming pools. But the issue that I find sort of hits me in the face that indicates that it's urban is the density. So they're looking for 565 dwelling units, including the units for employees. And that just doesn't seem like nature-based recreation to me. And the general plan has long considered Lake Berriessa a nature-based destination. So for instance, in the economic development section of the general plan, it says that, "Critical to the economic future of the lake area, the quality of the new federal concessions to be opened within the next two years, developing facilities to support a new focus on nature-based recreation, improving public access to the thousands of acres of public land, and protecting the natural resources that attract visitors, including the scenic views of the hills and the riches." But I see what this proposal means is to become a destination resort itself, and the destination is no longer really Lake Berriessa and nature-based recreation. And I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, was there some policy change that I'm not familiar with? One of the, one of the goals of the economic section is to promote Lake Berriessa as a water and nature-based recreation area. So I'm kind of confused really, what this is all about. Do I need to stop?
Yes, your three minutes is up, thank you.
Okay.
If you'd like, you can send an email to the board with follow-up.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
Kelly Anderson Angwin, I did read the staff report, and I had a number of questions and comments. The link, there was a live link that would take one to see some of the cabins or the cottages, and that was not functioning. I am curious, I learned a little bit during the Eco Village and Angwin process about someone coming forward and gaining entitlements, and after they got the entitlement, then going out and trying to bring in a developer or contractor to do the work, and I understand that maybe that's the case here. So I'm wondering, what assurance or agreement, and maybe it's available to you and it's proprietary, but what do we know about this Margaritaville brand that assures us that they're interested in going forward should this gentleman get the entitlement here today? Do we know that that is going to happen? The prospectus mentioned some things that I think stand correcting. It said 70 to 80 people a weekend were arrested in Lake Berriessa, like routinely? There may have been one or two concerts back in the days when something happened, but 70 to 80 people being arrested, that is incorrect. There's a lot of effort by the Sheriff's Department to monitor drinking and make the lake safe, we do know that. But the concept also of creating a substation there, kind of what the Eco Village said they were going to do in Angwin, so you have to be careful of like, the carrots that they're putting out there, are they very, are they real? The Berriessa Snow Mountain National Conservation Area, that is hundreds if not, thousands of acres if not a million now, is the Berriessa Snow Mountain National Conservation Area. I agree with Carol that we should be drawing people to the lake, to the nature-based activities, and not to a theme park. The very idea of something called Margaritaville in Napa County is kind of cringey. So this project proposes four or 500 units, and then RV parks, and then housing for workers, and that is one resort. So if we extrapolate that, and I don't know what the level intensity is at others, but there could be a lot of development out there. In a world where we need to get smaller, and slower, and quieter, and more gentle, and this seems to just be driving a Las Vegas-style theme park in a rural area of the county where we should be walking quietly on earth, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is Nancy Tamarisk, I live out in Circle Oaks, lived there for over 30 years. And you all have mentioned the economic problems out at Lake Berriessa, and indeed they are true. When we, for example, moved in, Moscow White Corners had a church, a gas station, a bar and grill, a restaurant, a post office, all gone, all gone. Spanish flat, general store, restaurant, all gone. The only thing that's thriving out there is, can anyone name it? Turtle Rock, God bless Turtle Rock, okay. So it's been an economically devastated area since, since the resorts have closed, and certainly help needs to happen. I am blown away by the size of this. We're talking about over 500, between the 100 RV and over 400 cottage abodes, we're talking about over 500. Just to give you an example of scale, Meritage has 322 rooms, Archer has less than 200. Okay, so we're talking about something bigger than either of those. So I think, and again, we're talking about a theme park, we're talking about people going in and having every, all of their needs met right there. So my question is, how will that help to revitalize the economy of Lake Berriessa, other than providing a few jobs for, say, housekeepers, or waiters, or whatever? So I think it's really important, what y'all, especially, Board Member Pedroza has mentioned, the community outreach to find out how are entrepreneurs, our local potential entrepreneurs and community members out in the Lake Berriessa area feel what they need to help them get up their mom-and-pop operations again. But once again, the idea of having probably around 1,500 to 2,000 people out there at that one resort on a weekend, living, staying, living in cottages, or, that's a city, that's not rural recreation, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good morning, I'm sorry, Mike Hackett from Angwin, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this issue. I am just blown away, I guess because I spent a lot of my life looking down at things from high altitude, I've never seen a project that is less ready for your vote than this one in the last 10 years. You have not done due diligence on the developers, and I'd also say, there's one very important message here, and you need to each ask yourselves, has there ever been a better decision made when you're rushed to make that decision? I can't think of a one. In addition, although I primarily have been working with Save Napa Valley Foundation on environmental issues, development of wineries and vineyards, working with Center for Biological Diversity and Water Audit California, we have discovered in our investigations of every single staff development proposal, large omissions, and faulty work, and I see the same thing happening here. I don't know if this will be a good proposal or not, but having, being a person that loves Napa Valley and have lived here most of my adult life and raised my kids here, this is way, way too large. This is an urban, this is a development for the lake, not for a destination for a lot of people to sing Jimmy Buffett, since his name was brought up, I'll bring it up again, but he's passed away. I just, I just want my opinion to be in the record, that you are not ready to make a decision on this, and it is very clear to me. Thank you.
Next public comment? See no other public comment in the boardroom, I'll turn to the phone lines. Thank you, I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board, and I'll just reemphasize that what is, yeah, I'll allow it.
Hello, this is Elaine.
You have three minutes for public comment, please proceed.
Can you hear us?
Hello?
Go ahead Elaine, you have three minutes.
Okay, hello, this is Elaine De Man, I'm a biologist, a naturalist, and I am a Jimmy Buffett fan. Nevertheless, I have a huge problem with such a trendy concept as Margaritaville, which does indeed make me cringe. How long will that brand be desirable? I'd stay away from this one. And don't rush into this. Times have changed, put it out to bid again, and see if we can get something that's more in keeping with a nature-based concept. We're all going to have to live with this for a long, long time. Please don't rush this through, it's worth getting it right. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Let me confirm, not for this item.
We will close public comment, and we will bring it back to the board now for discussion and decision, and as I was starting to say, just to reiterate, this is not a development project that is before us, this is an exclusive negotiation agreement to determine, in fact, what that project would be if the board decides to move forward. So the, I think in this circumstance, certainly the words do matter, is what is only being asked of us is whether we want to enter into negotiations, and an exclusive negotiation with WITIM and Napa LLC. Supervisor Pedroza.
Look Chair, I think you summed it up, you know, very well, you know, this is continuing the conversation to see if we can find the win-win for our community, so I do support, you know, going forward, and I agree, words matter, and I just, I'm having a hard time accepting that we're rushing into a decision when we've been having this conversation publicly multiple times. We've had community meetings, I know, I've hosted community meetings in Berriessa, my colleague Supervisor Dylan before hosted community meetings in Berriessa, I know Supervisor Control, and I've had numerous conversations around the state of Berriessa. And when I look at the proposal, I see an ability to recreate with nature, to experience it, I don't see mass scale development, I don't see seven-story hotels. So I think we have to make sure that we're being true, and we're not using scare tactics here, because this is a community that has been asking us for multiple years. We've gone to Washington DC together, talking about this, and here we are, presenting, you know, the community, an opportunity to continue the dialogue. Whether we make the deal or not is to be determined, I hope we can reach that point, but we have to talk about the specifics and how Napa County benefits from your opportunity to do business here. So I see this as an opportunity, but I just, we got to make sure that we're sticking to the facts, right? And I think there's a lot of people in Berriessa that I personally talked to that I represent, that are hoping that we can continue this journey to make sure that we do something that is benefiting not just Berriessa, but the county at large. So I do support, and I'm happy to make a motion at the right time, Chair.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Chair, I'm wondering if I could just ask a question of Counsel Dr. Rotten?
Certainly.
The issue of the general plan, language around Lake Berriessa, water and nature-based recreation area versus urban recreation area, I just want to make sure that we have, and I think I know the answer, the ability to, we will have to make sure that this proposal meets the demands of the general plan, correct? And so by entering into this negotiating agreement, that doesn't preclude our, not only our ability, but our responsibility to make sure that whatever we do complies with the general plan.
That's correct, the board will need to have a finding ultimately, that the project complies with the general plan, and, you know, look at the environmental document as well, so the board will have ample opportunity to approve this project or deny it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
If I could add to that though, and I'm not disagreeing with counsel at all, but we also do have to remember, this is federal land, this is not land that the county has owned or general planned, it's federal land, and the, through the record of decision, the feds have defined the allowable uses there, and we signed a management agreement with the feds to implement that plan. So I'm not in any way saying you don't have some discretion to modify, but we're not, it's not a typical discussion of use, A, landing in ag watershed, and, you know, does that meet policy, whatever, again, this is federal land and the uses are somewhat defined. So anyway.
I mean, have we compared that to our general plan policies?
Well, again, this land is not zoned, it's not zoned by the general plan, it's not...
Yes, it is. Please, if we could allow staff to comment.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, again, it's federal land, and the management agreement that we signed is what defines the uses. Now, again, the board has some discretion, if the board just taken, the board decided they hated swimming pools, and said, man, I'm good with that resort, but I don't want any swimming pools, you know, we can talk to the developer, and maybe, you know, that would be a possibility, but it's, it's different than land that is not federal land.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Supervisor Control.
Thank you Chair, I had a follow-up question, I think we've heard a little bit about a public comment about nature-based versus urban-based, so I was going to ask Lee if you could talk a little bit about how, you know, how you're defining that in a concept like this. Although I think, Steve, I'm not clear if you're saying that designation, we shouldn't even be looking at that. So that's part A, and then part B, you mentioned what the initial build-out there was before things were removed, and can you remind us of what those numbers were? And we know that we wanted to come, you know, not do that same thing, but those were significantly higher.
I don't, I don't remember the numbers specifically, but if you, speaking about Steel Canyon, if you drove, for instance, I guess it's Berry, Berryessa Knoxville Road, actually, I'm thinking the Spanish flat at that point, but if you looked at the resorts, and certainly there are pictures of them, there were mobile homes, or RVs, or whatever they were, literally side by side, the ent- there were, um, mobile homes, or RVs, or whatever they were, literally side by side, the entire shoreline. I mean, so we're talking, um, um, I don't know, four or five times the density of what we're talking about here. I mean, it, it was really, it was really dramatic density in those old resorts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board at this time? Supervisor Pedrosa.
I'm happy to move that we advance Lake Barriessa Concessions' exclusive negotiating agreement for Steel Canyon Resort Area.
I'll second that, but I'd like to add in the recommendation to schedule, not only the community meetings, but also a report back to the board. Maybe staff can make a recommendation every six months, or something like that, quarter every six months.
Do you accept the amendment to your motion?
I do.
Okay. As amended, we have a motion by Supervisor Pedrosa, a second by Supervisor Cottrell, to include community meetings and reports back on a regular basis to, not just staff, but to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Well, we are now through consent. Thank you, staff.
Thank you Chair, members of the board, and to our wonderful clerk of the board.
Yes. So, um, situationally, we are going to take a 15-minute break because the board has been sitting here, as have staff. The items we will take up next, we have timed items, will be 13A and B. And then we will return to item 11A. We are on recess for 15 minutes.
B.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. We are now back from recess. At this time, I will call on item thirteen B, Public Hearing, Set for ten thirty, Duck Horn Vineyards Winery Appeal Use Permit, Major Modification Number nineteen zero 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 nine seven. And this is what is being requested. Mr. Hawks, I'll let you go ahead and tell us what is being requested.
Thank you, Chair. Honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, Trevor Hawks with the Planning Division. This is, yeah, this item was the Duck, is the Duck Horn Vineyards Winery Appeal. It's being appealed by appellants Water Audit California and Preserve Lodi Lane. The applicant has requested a continuance as they take a look at potentially modify the, modifying the scope of the project. They've requested a continuance to a date uncertain. The, both appellants have been notified and they've not given us any objection to this continuance. So, staff requests that the board, you've introduced the item, you opened the public hearing, then if there's no comments at the board, our recommendation is that you continue this to a date uncertain. Staff will properly notify the boards, you know, community members, the appellant and the applicant, when we have a date from the applicant that is certain. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. What is requested of us is continuation to a date uncertain. At this time, I'll open public comment on this public hearing and the request for continuance on item thirteen B.
Although the attorney for Water Audit California is not here, we have been working on this project and supporting it, and we are in total agreement with the request for today.
Thank you. See no other public comment in the boardrooms. I'll turn to the phone lines. See no public comment on the phones for this item thirteen B. At this time, I will entertain a motion to grant the continuance for a date uncertain and continue this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Gregory and a second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor? Sorry, Cottrell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This matter is continued. Next, we will move on to item thirteen A. Thirteen A is a public hearing, the Rutherford Ranch Appeal, consideration and possible direction regarding an appeal. What is being requested of us today is another continuance, and joining us is Mr. Parker from Planning.
Chair Ramos, members of the board, Michael Parker with the Planning Division. This is the Rutherford Ranch Appeal filed by Water Audit California. As you know, based on the staff report, in order to accommodate the appellant, the applicant, and staff schedules, it is requested that the chair introduce the item, open the public hearing, and request a motion for continuance to February sixth, twenty twenty four, at ten thirty a.m. Staff presentation and public testimony will not occur today, and the applicant, the appellant, and staff are all supportive of this continuance.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing, and what is being requested of us is a continuance from this item to February sixth at ten thirty a.m. I will open public comment on this public hearing and request for a continuance. Seeing none in the boardroom, I'll turn to the phone lines. Thank you. I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board. This public hearing is open. The requested item is to continue this to February sixth, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Gregory, second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This matter is continued.
Thank you.
Now, we will take up item eleven A. There she is. Ms. Laura Anderson from County Council is with us, and what is being requested is consideration and adoption of a resolution of findings of fact on appeal filed by Center for Biological Diversity concerning the Lake Colleen Vineyard Agricultural Erosion Control Application submitted by Lake Colleen LLC and Cold Springs LLC. Ms. Anderson.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. What's before you today is the resolution of findings of fact and decision on appeal. This is the last step in the appeal process for the Lake Colleen matter. And as you may recall, on August fifteenth, you adopted a motion of intent to uphold the first, third, fourth, eighth, and ninth grounds of appeal, deny the second, fifth, sixth, and seventh grounds of appeal, reverse the director's certification of the EIR, and reverse the approval of the modified project. This resolution in front of you today accomplishes those actions and formal findings. The resolution was shared with the appellant and the applicant's counsel, and neither of them had any comments. The public hearing is closed, so comments today are limited to whether or not the resolution accurately reflects the board's intent. And staff believes it does and recommends adoption after you take public comment.
Thank you so much. So just to, I will ask first if the board has any questions, comments, or suggested modifications to the findings before us. Seeing none from the board, I will open public comment. Again, to reiterate, public comment is reserved for only the findings of fact and not the project itself as the public hearing is closed. Anyone public comment on this item?
Hi, Michelle Benvenuto, Wine Growers of Napa County. Wine Growers is concerned with the prevalence of emotional appeals overshadowing evidence-based discourse in Napa County's public policy discussions on agriculture. Since nineteen sixty-eight, Napa County has upheld a robust ag economy guided by data-driven policies. Yet, we've observed emotional and political appeals without substantiated report, support, opposing both vineyard and winery projects. This resolution cites verbal testimony several times to justify the findings. Since when does anecdotal evidence, which by definition is subjective and unable to be independently verified, supersede scientific evidence? The resolution also cites inconsistencies with the general plan, yet this decision is inconsistent with general plan item LU six to create a stable and predictable regulatory environment, and LU ten that focuses on the right-to-farm provisions that ensure agriculture remains the primary land use in Napa County and is not threatened by potentially competing uses or neighbor complaints. The current environment is neither stable nor predictable, and this uncertainty absolutely threatens the future of agriculture in Napa County. Vineyards and wineries are synonymous with Napa. We encourage Napa County to recommit to an evidence-based, predictable regulatory process to establish a vineyard or winery. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Kelly Anderson-Angwin, thank you. To the subset of supervisors who, for the first time, in my experience, read the general plan and found that there were policies that in fact did protect watershed, wildlife, and the greater community. In fact, Angwin has a, has a description of what it is in the general plan, and it's a forested community. For the first time, in as long as I've been reading these projects, the general plan was used to protect this important natural resource. The science behind it, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife environmental scientist Jean Chen commented on it, Fisheries biologist Patrick Higgins commented on it, Beth Hunting, a longtime conservationist, Jake Ruget, Forest Forever, California Oaks Foundation, our own Parks and Open Space retired director John Woodbury, Land Trust, Peter La Court of PUC, there are a number, Dr. Tiffany Yap of the Center for Biological Diversity, the science-based evidence also reflecting other peer-reviewed studies about connectivity and watershed protection was all in there. There's nothing that wasn't science-based about the decision that you made. There were many, many people, recreational users, conservationists, that sent you letters, and most of all, for the first time, not the first time, the Center for Biological Diversity has appealed several terribly devastating projects, the Davis Project. There, for the first time, we had supervisors who read the general plan, and for that, I am very grateful and grateful for the Center for Biological Diversity for their years of work in Napa County. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Frances Tini. I'm an attorney with the Center for Biological Diversity. We appreciate the board's careful consideration of the Lake Colleen project. The board majority was right to ask tough questions about Lake Colleen and its potential to harm water quality, nearby communities, sensitive wildlife, and the planet. We thank the board for taking the time to fully understand the details of the proposal, for trusting the best available science, and for hearing the concerns of the community. A final decision to deny this project in Angwin is about strategic planning, climate resiliency, and public health. It is in no way a rebuke of the region's rich agricultural history. Smart land use decisions that factor in the reality of a rapidly warming planet will help the region continue to grow grapes for decades to come. We urge the board to adopt the resolution. Thank you for your time and attention.
Next speaker? Last call for public comment on this item?
My name is Lisa Del Godillo. I have owned property adjacent to Lake Colleen. I was here last time we had this discussion, and a friend of ours is Roger Lutz. I have lived in the Angwin area for over thirty years, and I have seen the progression and what he shared last time we were in this meeting over Lake Colleen, is that over time, as there has been vineyards put in on Los Pesadas, people at the beginning of Cold Springs, where it turns to the end, they have progressively lost their water as they have wells. There is no Angwin water coming out Cold Springs, and so they have either had to dig deeper...
Ms. Del Godillo, if I could please have you stick to the findings of fact, as this is not a public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to thank you for upholding your decision to deny this project. Thank you.
Any other public comment in the boardroom? Seeing none, I'll move to the phone lines. We have three callers, Chair. First caller is Elizabeth Swisher. Elizabeth, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. Good morning. I just wanted to call in from Pope Valley to say thank you to the supervisors who upheld the appeal for this project. Really appreciate that. I think it was in the wrong location, and they did the right thing. Good job. I'm going to pass the phone over to my husband, Thomas Freeman. He's on the list to call in.
Okay.
Hello, I just wanted to echo my wife's remarks about commending the Board of Supervisors for upholding the appeal on, from the Center for Biological Diversity. I think it was the right decision, and it's really refreshing to see our newly-elected supervisors living up to their campaign promises and putting the environmental concerns of Angwin and Napa in general above this relentless quest for making more wines. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think we both did it in one.
Okay. Our next caller is Francie.
Yes, hello. I live on Cold Springs Road in Angwin. Thank you for offering me this time. Thank you, Supervisors Bellia, Gallagher, and Cottrell, for your willingness to apply science, good governance, and stewardship to the issues raised in the Lake Colleen appeal, and for applying a comprehensive analysis of all of the applicable regulatory considerations for this decision. Your decision took courage and conviction as evidenced by the hyperbolic and emotional reactions from some corners of the county. But I feel the need to call out your courage is evidence of the imbalance of power and influence that has developed in the Napa County, especially over the last twenty years. We are living in an era of rapid change, economic, climate, and demographic. Denying the changes and insisting on business as usual will not serve us, any of us. More difficult decisions will be coming before this board. I look forward to supporting you in continuing to make courageous, even if perceived as controversial, decisions to continue the history of natural beauty and economic prosperity for all residents of Napa County. Thank you.
It appears our third caller dropped off and hasn't returned, so that concludes public comment. Okay. At this time, please let me know if that same caller does reconnect, so I can allow that one in. At this time, I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and decision. Or just a motion. Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you, Chair Ramos. I just had a couple of things I wanted to cover. I first wanted to acknowledge the time and efforts of the applicant and the appellate, appellants team, the community who has participated, and particularly county staff. And in terms of the substance here, I support the resolution as drafted by staff and wanted to call out just a few statements that are, are in that resolution. First, that our general plan policies recognize agriculture as the primary land use in Napa County, and that the significance of agriculture is echoed through policies and goals that reserve agriculture land for agriculture use. And also, the general plan recognizes that preserving watershed open space can be not only consistent with, but also critical to our support of agriculture and ag preservation goals. Again, the board affirms the importance of agriculture and its foundational significance in maintaining both our rural character and our economic vitality. And in reviewing this appeal, our job has been narrow and not only location-specific, but specific to the project and its EIR. It involves carefully weighing and balancing general plan policies and goals to determine whether there is an overall consistency with those policies. This is not an inquiry into our conservation regulations or those processes. It's about general plan policies. As is pointed out in paragraph A two, quote, "Our finding of inconsistency and incompatibility is entirely due to the unique setting and particular features of this project and this EIR. It doesn't speak to other locations, other projects, or even a different project at this location." And then, in closing, I just wanted to thank my fellow board members Supervisor Gregory and Supervisor Pedrosa. I know we're voting differently on this item, but your comments have been thoughtful and respectful. I appreciate that, and I know we share a commitment to agriculture and to our communities and to a sustainable path forward so that Napa continues to be a global leader in grape-growing and wine-making, as well as a good steward of its natural resources.
Anything? And I'll make a motion to support this, to adopt this resolution.
And I'll second.
I just want to add Supervisor Cottrell, I'm going to say nothing further, as you said it all. That was beautifully stated, and I want to, I want to thank my, my colleagues, all of them, joining Supervisor Cottrell, in that at this level, behind this dais, this decision has remained respectful and courteous and professional. And I want to say that That isn't the case necessarily in other spaces, and I do want to thank all of my colleagues for their thoughtfulness in this. As we decide these projects individually, to listen to each other is incredibly valuable. So, thank you. Supervisor Pedrosa.
You know, look, I have nothing to say, but I'll just respond to, I think, what you shared, Chair, and what Supervisor Cottrell shared. You know, I appreciate that. You know, this is democracy, we make decisions. We always don't have to agree, but I think the way that it's unfolded today, I just wanted to call that out because I think that spoke very highly of the board. And to me, it's the way it should be, right? We always don't have to agree, but we have sometimes different visions, and I look forward to continuing to actually talk about our visions, because I think that's what the community wants. So, while I don't support the direction of the majority of the board, I do respect the decision you all made. But again, I just appreciate those words, so thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Cottrell, a second by Supervisor Gallagher, to approve the resolution of findings of fact and decision on appeal to deny the Lake Colleen project. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes 3-2. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. At this time, I will ask for County Council to announce our closed session items.
Thank you, Chair Ramos. Today, we have three items on the board's closed session agenda. Item 14A, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Napa County versus Lindsay Hoops, at all pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. Second item, 14B, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code 54957.6. This is regarding SEIU 2015, representing IHSS workers, and with our agency representative, Christine Bruseno. The last item, item 14C, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to 54956.8 regarding the Galastoga Fairgrounds. And the agency negotiator is Ryan Alsop, and the negotiating parties, Napa County and City of Galastoga. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take public comment on the announced closed session items.
Good morning, supervisors. You've had a long morning already. Appreciate that. My name is Spencer Hoops, and I've owned land and lived in Napa Valley since 1983 when we planted our vineyard. We produced our first wine, Hoops Vineyard, in 1999. I only have three minutes, but I'd like to bring to your attention the most critical parts of this case, brought against our family winery and asked for your help. It's my sincere hope that none of you are actually aware of what is happening in the county's lawsuit against our winery. If you do know what's happening, that means you're either staying quiet as code enforcement and county council engage in extraordinary illegal and unconstitutional actions, or that you're supportive of the actions, which would be a violation of your oaths of office. I believe we're being targeted as whistleblowers to what we know to be unlawful government action. A lot of that has been covered by the San Francisco Chronicle, NBC, CBS, and scores of other publications. We're being retaliated against, as others have, in order to silence us and force us out of business for bringing to light the rampant unlawful county actions that are impacting small business owners. Despite a Napa County Superior Court judge ruling last year that the county was unlikely to prevail on the merits of its lawsuit against our vineyard, the county presses on with its illegal action at extraordinary taxpayer expense, I believe to be well in excess of a million dollars. I hope you will consider the following information and ask county council and code enforcement to answer for activities that have opened the county up to significant liability. The county is attempting to regulate activity that is preempted by state law. Beyond the rights granted pursuant to our small winery use permit exemption, we have an O2 license, which allows licensed wine growers to sell wine to consumers for consumption on the property. Importantly, the law holds that local authorities may restrict, but not eliminate, those privileges. The county is attempting to eliminate these rights in violation of state law. Prior to the dispute in 2019, the Planning, Building, Environmental Services Director, David Morrison, explicitly confirmed to us that we could lawfully sell wine at Hoops Vineyards, a meeting which Supervisor Pedrosa set up for my daughter Lindsay. Despite all county officials having expressly stated that Hoops has unlimited rights to retail wine sales, we began receiving notices of apparent violation in 2020. Notices of violation including string lights, presence of an airstream on the property, an animal sanctuary. I notice you like animals, we presented a bunny rabbit this morning. We like animals as well, and we have a 501(c)(3) sanctuary there near the grounds. Code enforcement Officer Cahill deposed that these were not prohibited practices in pursuit of these...
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other public comment on closed session items? Seeing any on the phone?
In progress.
Ready? All right, I'll call the meeting of the Flood Control and Water Conservation District to order. A roll call, please.
Sorry, Director Ramos? Director Pedrosa? Director Painter? Director Muller is excused. Director Lopez Ortega? Director Garcia? Director Gallagher? Director Doring? Director Cottrell? Vice Chair Sedgley? Chair Gregory?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We're on to approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from our last meeting on October 10th for approval. I would ask for public comment. I don't see anybody in the room, anybody on the line. Okay, is there a motion? Thank you. Motion by Director Garcia, second by Director Painter. All those in favor? Aye. Post? Extentions? That pass is unanimous. Jump right on down to public comment. This is public comment on anything not on our agenda today but within our purview. Still don't see anybody in the room. And I'll check again about the phone lines. Okay, closed public comment for today. Thank you, and we'll jump down to our one administrative item, which is our monthly update on the flood control project. Mr. Thomasser and Butler.
Good afternoon, Rick Thomasser, District Manager. So I'll start out and turn it over to Andrew. So we, I just wanted to report that we had a really great public meeting last week on Thursday. I think we had about thirty-six or so participants. And it was just an update meeting on the thirty-five percent design. And we did it entirely remotely on Zoom. And I was actually a little skeptical that we might get some negative feedback on it. But I know the mayor was in attendance. I don't know if you had any thoughts on it, but we had nothing but good comments, actually. So it went, was an hour long. And we just, there wasn't a lot to update, but we had, again, thirty-six people. We answered questions, and that was that. And then we've created a pretty user-friendly website interface for people to provide comment on the project. And that's working well as well. So, you know, pleased that that worked out. And we have another meeting on November ninth coming up on this Thursday. And it's our environmental scoping meeting. So it's a requirement of CEQA that we're actually updating the EIR for this next phase of the project to address some of any environmental regulation changes that have occurred since the nineteen ninety-nine environmental document. And then also to address some minor changes in the design from the original design that was reviewed at that time. And so that will also be online at five o'clock on the ninth.
On the project design, we are starting to engage on a couple of reviews with the core that are focused on safety. The first one of those is the safety assurance review. For that, we're actually, we've put out an RFQ for technical members of a panel that's going to review all of the rest of the design submittals, looking at specifically safety and risk. We're looking for members with specialties in hydraulics, civil, geotech, and structural engineering. So that's how we're hoping to select those members by the end of, end of December. I think we're going to get those on board, and they'll start with reviewing the sixty-five percent design. We're also working with the core on what they call risk-informed design. That's kind of a workshop they do to look at the risk of a project, any remaining risk after a project is built, and possible failure modes for a project. So usually, there's a few workshops for that. And we spend about a week working through the different design topics. And we'll be working with the core on that. On our land acquisition front, we currently have four offers out. We've heard back from all of those landowners in some fashion. And we have basically four in the queue that are about to go out. So eight total that should be out soon here. I think that's about it, unless anyone has questions.
Directors, any questions? In terms of the construction start for this phase, is it still anticipated to be end of next year?
We're looking at a, basically a summer of twenty twenty-five start. We're still shooting for that. There's a few things out there that we're working through with the core that could push us, but we're still definitely shooting for the twenty twenty-five start.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, well, I'd ask for public comments. Still nobody in the room, but I will look to the phones one more time? No? Okay, thanks. And thanks for the update. Rick, why don't you stay with us? District managers' updates?
Just one item. We have made some, a breakthrough with the Bureau of Reclamation. I'm pleased to report, so our water contract for Lake Bariessa, that it needs to be renewed by the end of February. We seem to be at a bit of an impasse on how we were going to do the environmental review. They actually said they would take it over and take care of that for us. And they scheduled our negotiation session for November seventeenth in the afternoon in Folsom. And they have assured us that they are on track to renew the contract before the expiration. So, good news.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any directors' reports or announcements? Director Pedrosa?
I'll just say, you know, we had, both Supervisor Ramos and I were part of the Great One Capitals. And one of the things that we're working with is other regions presenting about projects, what they're doing. And it was really interesting, Porto, Portugal had a very similar project, like our flood control project. So to hear them talk about what they were doing, and they're barely entering the phase of having it be like an active use. So being able to talk about our project and what it's done for our community was pretty incredible. So I did offer some opportunities for our staff to talk to them. So there might be some email communication. But I thought it was a really great example of this global collaboration of how we think we're doing some pretty innovative stuff. And then you go, and you actually see we are doing some innovative stuff, and others are following suit. So I thought it was just a great example to talk about the project we did here locally, so.
When do we book our flight to Portugal?
I might have, I might have offered them to come here first, for the record. And I thought maybe that can reciprocate another trip potentially. Really proud moment.
All right, seeing no other announcements, any future gen items from any of us? All right, not seeing any. Great, we are, we do have, need to get into closed session for one item today. I'd ask our deputy county council, Ms. Bagley, to announce it, please.
Thank you. We will be going into closed session regarding a conference with the Real Property Negotiator concerning the property located at five zero five Lincoln Avenue in the city of Napa. Negotiating parties are Rick Thomasser, Flood District Manager, and the property owner of five oh five Lincoln Avenue, LLC. Under negotiation are the price terms and conditions of payment.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move to closed session.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
We're now back from closed session and council would please report out on our closed session items 14A through C.
Thank you Chair Ramos. Item 14A, no reportable action was taken. Direction was given to council. On agenda item 14B, conference with labor negotiator, no reportable action. Direction was given to the negotiator. And on item 14C, conference with real property negotiator, no reportable action. Direction was given to the negotiator. That concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time we will adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors Tuesday November 28 at 20:23 AM. We are adjourned.